This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville Community Development Committee of the Whole regular meeting on Monday, March 7th, 2024. Deputy Clerk, could I please have the roll call?
Mayor Brummel?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie is absent. Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, everyone, please stand if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time we have set aside for citizens' comments. We'll hear any verbal or written comments. And as far as I know, we have one person signed up who will speak to the topic when it comes up if anyone has any questions. It's Barb Thornberry, and if there's questions about the Warren Tavern, she'll be available. So now is the time for officials and staff's comments. Mayor?
Thank you. I think we should put Warren Tavern on the agenda more often. That's all I have. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Council members? Okay. Treasurer?
Next Saturday is the Budget Workshop, and it happens to fall on St. Patrick's Day. The sister city of Warrenville is Yeall, Ireland, which is on the southern coast of Ireland, happens to be where most of the movie Moby Dick was filmed. But it means, I think, that when people come to the Budget Workshop, they should be wearing green. And I had no idea he'd be here tonight, but former Mayor Rich Volkmer has said that if there's a city meeting and people aren't wearing green, they should be fined. The second thing is we're in the middle of tax season, and the Internal Revenue Service has a program, VITA, volunteers and tax assistance, that funds some volunteer organizations that help people with their taxes. There's one called Ladder Up, which helps anybody file their taxes for free with an income up to $64,000. They have programs in Aurora on Saturday mornings at Robynsy Community College or in Naperville at the Nichols Library on Thursday afternoons in March. There's also a program through AARP, the American Association of Retired Persons, and they accept people of any age and any income and will help them file their taxes for free. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. We'll all be in uniform, I assume, not only because of St. Patrick's Day, because of the financial category, and green is the money that we'll be discussing. So thank you. Are there any staff comments?
Just building on the workshop on Saturday, that Budget Workshop is open to the public, starts at 9:00 AM. You are all welcome to join us if you're interested in seeing how the city's revenues and expenses are decided and the big projects are discussed. I also wanted to take a moment to thank the public for attending. We had three focus groups last week related to our strategic planning. We had over 50 participants from the various taxing districts and various groups in town and as well as members of the public and businesses, so I just wanted to thank everyone for participating.
Thank you. Okay, let's begin the business of the meeting. This evening's first agenda item is consideration of the Warren Tavern building ownership transfer request. Community and Economic Development Director Emory will introduce and tell us all about this item. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. The request has been submitted by the Warren Tavern preservationists to donate the Warren Tavern building to the City of Warrenville. Currently, the city owns the land upon which the building rests. The item before you is to direct the city attorney to initiate drafting of a formal agreement, and that agreement would define how we would convey the building from the tavern preservationists to the city, and it would also define the relationship that we would have going forward related to a number of items such as utilities, insurance, maintenance, event operations, and other things that we haven't identified yet, but we will get to as we move into that process. If you do agree with this action, we would commence drafting that agreement as soon as possible. Our goal would be to bring the agreement before you for review and consideration toward the end of the summer. The packet that you have includes the formal request letter and some supplemental information about the tavern and the condition of the site. Richard Volkmer, the chairman of the Warren Tavern Preservationists, is here tonight, and he would like to make a few remarks. We are both available to answer any questions that you might have after he provides those remarks.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Yes, please go to the microphone and introduce yourself once more and let us know what's going on.
Well, I'm still Rich Volkmer, and tonight we have joining us for this meeting members of our Board of Directors Fred Olafes, Troy Kibler, Jenny Lund, and Barbara Thornberry, who's also our managing director that sees to the function of the building. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration of this proposal. It does take me back, and I'll be brief about the history. It takes me back to 1981, when a similar offer was made to the city council by the Adam Emory Albright Warrenville Memorial Foundation to donate the city museum, the Albright Studio better known. That was a tough sell because it was a ramshackle building and it was in poor shape, and the city took it on as a project. From 1981 till, I'm thinking, 1984, an extensive project was undertaken. In that case, totally donated funds and fundraising scared up a little over $200,000 of work on that building. It was totally reframed, new windows, new roof, and what else? Oh, an entire buildout inside. It was still pretty much in the shape of the Methodist Church built in 1858, just a wide open room with a choir loft. So all the walls and so forth had to be subdivided and built, and in fact, originally housed a high-tech cable TV studio in half the building because Centel made a substantial contribution toward the rebuilding of that building. When they cleared out, we made them pay again to get out of town, so finally, the Historical Society had the entire building. It was always the dream for that building to be a home for our Historical Society. Well, now we're quite a few years, 30, 40 years down the road, and it's still working out well. I believe the city has a good working relationship with the Historical Society, and now we come upon our proposition, the little building next door. Again, a very brief history. That particular building was erected on the corner where Walgreens is by the founder of our community, Colonel Warren. He built it as a three-room hotel, and it worked that way for about 50 years. Around the turn of the century, a family moved in and took it over, and then subsequently another family occupied the building, the Egler family. Ellis Egler was the last person to live in that as a home. There had been some additions built over the years that really weren't very sound, but the whole business was moved over onto city property in Mayor Lund's time. I'm going to say that was 1993, and the building was undertaken for repairs in fits and starts by the fledgling Warren Tavern Preservationist group. The civic group had undertaken the salvation of that building because it was surely to be demolished when the new Walgreens was built. So around the corner, it moved on wheels, and it got put down on a new foundation, and then it sat again for years and years. The weather took its toll, and the additions basically collapsed and had to be demolished. Well, largely through support from Mayor Lund, a series of grants enabled the rebuilding of the Warren Tavern. So as you see it today, it's the product of a seven-year process that was completed in 2002. Since then, there've been another series of grants. We come with hat in hand to the city every year for a little spending money and keep the place going, keep it kept up. It's had a new roof and new windows and a series of paint jobs over the years. It stands today as a testimony to a combination of city money and voluminous grants of donations, I should say, of manpower and materials by the Union Building Trades, the Plumbers Union, the Electricians Union, the carpenters, who am I living out, the sheet metal workers, all donated their time, the plumbers, all donated their time and materials and manpower to that project. So we come down to the present day, it's used regularly by various clubs in town. Our own Model A Club that I belong to meets there every first Tuesday of the month. The Museum Guild ladies meet there, and they squirrel away all their Christmas sale materials in the basement, and the Tuesday at the tavern ladies meet there. And in between times, Barbara rents the place out for weddings, funeral gatherings, family reunions, a lot of baby showers and wedding showers, that sort of thing. So the problem we've encountered increasingly in recent years, more than any single factor, is insurance costs. They just keep escalating on us. So we come to the point where, following the established pattern of the Albright Studio, we'd like to turn this building over to city ownership. You already have the land beneath it, so I think it's the right thing in the long run. Now, this doesn't mean we want to abandon our project. We'd like to stay at the tiller and keep running it, much as we have over the years. We'd like to serve a new landlord, put it that way. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions, and our board members are also here to respond if you have any particular issue.
Well, thank you for the interesting history. So many of us who lived around Warrenville at that time forgot all about the effort that was made to preserve this unique building, so it was great to hear that. I'm kind of curious about the move from the Walgreens location to its present site, and who did that and how did that come about?
Well, the Egler family sold the property originally, I believe, to Shell Oil Company. There was a request to put a Shell station on that corner, which the city turned down because there were already two gas stations at that intersection, and it fell into the hands, I believe, as time went by, to Walgreens Corporation. So they basically gave notice to the city that if the building, it could have the building if it wanted, but had to get it off the property by a date certain. So there was a hue and a cry, and all these enthusiastic citizens banded together as the Warren Tavern Preservationists. There was a lady named Evelyn Johnson, who was their leader, if you will, their rallying point, and she assembled, you know, Jenny is...
Leon Schmidt.
City historian.
Like seven or eight people that were, that banded together. We had requested that the Warren Historical Society, but they knew it was too big a project for them, they couldn't take it out. So there were citizens from the community and from preservation organizations that came together, and Mutual was the company that moved it for us.
Hank Hoxman was another early member of the Preservationists. As time went by, this proved to be such a monumental project that Mayor Lund took some initiative to step in and essentially rev up an actual reconstruction of the building or else knock it down. So she was instrumental, and I'm sure Maury recalls this from the years of those city council meetings, she was instrumental in providing a lot of the grant funding. Also the McCormick Foundation. We did have an ally in the carpenter that did work on both buildings, Bonnie Hutchinson, who is now retired and moved away. Hutch rebuilt both of those buildings from the carpentry standpoint. He was so well experienced on the Albright Studio project that we wanted him to be our guiding light on Warren Tavern, so he's, that building is so weak. It was, you could say it was, being built in 1838, it was built by settlers. It wasn't sturdy, it wasn't straight, it only sat on stones on the corners, it didn't have a real foundation, so the whole building was topsy-turvy. You could tell the difference in the Albright Studio building. It was as solid as a rock. It was built by actual carpenters that had moved into the area by 1858. So a 20-year generational gap there made all the difference, and that's also what made that little building so difficult to repair and restore. It still has its original timbers. They're all covered up for the most part, except in the attic. You can take a peek up there and see original timbers. But it's been rebuilt as a faithful reconstruction of the front of the building, the original three-room hotel. We had to add a new hall in the back of the building to cover up the open foundation where the two fallen-down additions had collapsed. So that's why the building is configured the way it is. It's not historically precise, but it is built like it should have been built as an addition back in the 1800s. It's architecturally correct, but we also had an architect, Mike Fordansky from Geneva, that was very skilled as a consultant. So what you see over there is 90% rebuilt, but it is faithful to the original. We ran into some flack from other historical organizations about our thorough rebuilding of the building because they think, that school of thought is that everything should be preserved even if it can't last. We wanted that place to be good for another century, and it is. So we're not turning over the keys to a worn-out building. You're getting a pretty decent building in the transaction.
Thank you for that fascinating description and history. Appreciate it, and I guess I'll open it up to the council members now if you have questions or comments, beginning with Alderman Lockett.
Thank you to everybody that was involved in that. I mean, just for all the work and the volunteers and the time and the effort that you guys have put in to secure that history, I think means a lot and says a lot. It was probably better that you guys came along and moved it if it was that raggedy and put it on a new foundation. And I did want to say, more people ask me, when does the tavern open? Because they think it's a tavern, you know, so maybe you guys could, you know, charge five bucks to let them walk in and then...
We don't have the same hours.
I'm sorry, I got to interrupt here. If you want to make public comment, you have to go to the podium and address the rest of the audience that may be listening at home, so please, please feel free to do that. Thank you.
So yeah, so that always comes up. Couple of questions. The city's going to take this over. I think city staff walked through the building, they gave a report, they said it was in great, it was in really good condition. They said it was ADA compliant, so the city doesn't necessarily have to spend any additional money on the onset to get that up to any kind of code, which is important. And I also think that it was important with what you were just speaking to in regards to restoring it back to its historic self, back to the way it was 80 years ago, only because once that house is registered in the historical district or whatever it may be, the cost to maintain those from the ancient windows to, you know, to put it back to the way it was originally is just astronomical. So from the city side, I think it's important to note that because the windows aren't going to, you don't have to go source windows from 1850 or have them custom-made, so I think that's very important. I guess the question would be currently, does the city maintain the grass and the grounds?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't change. And then approximately, how many events do you guys have a year there roughly? I'm sorry.
I'll ask Barb to comment on that.
It kind of depends on what you mean by events. So we have, like Rich said, we have the groups that meet weekly, so that would be Monday morning, Tuesday evening, there's two groups, and then one Thursday out of the month, the Paradise Environmental Group, that's starting up in the town, they meet once a month. As for rentals, that varies, and it could be as many as four to six rentals per month, or we could have maybe none. And then beyond that, we've been having open-mic events for the community, some concerts in the Commons area, so I would say the building's probably used like three to four times a week, kind of on an average for each week.
Okay. And do you guys set that up, meaning do you guys set up the tables, chairs, or whatever it may be?
No.
And tear down? No, it's all self-sustaining?
Each, it's all self, and it's self-cleaning, which they, they may not have the same ideal of clean as I do, so I typically have to go in there and clean the building after the groups have gone through, but it is part of the lease agreements that they sign because there is a contract that everybody has to sign in order to use the building.
Okay. And then do you have any kids that you could force to become on this board that could just keep going?
That would be lovely, wouldn't it?
But it's open to the public. Anybody who'd like to volunteer can contact you guys.
Absolutely.
Help out.
Yeah, absolutely. I do work with certain groups, so like there's an all-female Boy Scout troop in Naperville. They are Sea Scouts, meaning S-E-A, like sea, the, and they are currently in a process of getting some sort of licensure through the Coast Guard. So they've been using our building to get their CPR and first aid training and get all that, and then they are my on-call for physical, if I need anything fixed or cleaned or whatever, those young ladies come and they are at my beck and call because I've been letting them use the building for their training.
That's great. Yeah, so this will basically connect the Historical Society, Warren Tavern, and then Leon Schmidt Park.
Correct.
So we all have access to all three of those for events or anything else that the city wants to do.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Are there other questions or comments? If not, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, and let me echo the thank you for this group over the years. I know the enormous effort that has gone in decade after decade to keep that building alive and keep it for the community, so I would like to thank you all for that and the people, your predecessors who aren't here tonight, who added to that also. A couple of things from my perspective, when Albright Theater was being redone, I remember Bonnie came to me and the big logs that served rim joists around the building were put together with pegs, and I got to make some new pegs that would match what went into there, so that was historically accurate and was fun to take part in that. And I remember touring the tavern before it moved. It was clearly at that point a modern home with a kitchen and all that good stuff, but you could still find evidence of its age. I remember going upstairs and looking through a window and seeing how the glass was clearly handmade glass, and it was very old, and the window sashes had pegs in them and stuff. You could tell they were original. And in the basement, the basement floor was the biggest pieces of flagstone I've ever seen in my life. The floor was not concrete, but these huge flat stones, I don't know where they got them, but I'm sure, long gone, but there was evidence of, that'd been there for a long time. Going up in the attic, there were old doors laying up there that clearly were original doors, again, you could tell by the construction. So we haven't been able to keep that, but that memory is still there, that that building was built a long time ago, and then now with the way you've reconfigured it in a way that's sensitive to what it was and yet makes it useful to people going forward is a very nice contribution to the community, so thank you so much for doing that.
Dave, on those doors, you'd be happy to note that the doors that we have are identical to the originals.
Excellent.
They were salvaged out of my grandfather's farmhouse in Nebraska. There are seven doors over there that are exactly as the tavern originally had with the rimlock latches, any old cast hinges and...
Very cool.
You and I'll take a trip over and look those doors over.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, as you can see, there's a lot of interest and effort from people who have taken, I don't know, an avid interest in this historical building, and it seems right that the city should take it over and carry on its legacy. Would someone care to make a motion? Would someone care to make a motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council, direct the city attorney to negotiate an agreement with the Warren Tavern preservationists to facilitate conveyance of the Warren Tavern and define future operation and maintenance responsibilities for the structure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I don't see any further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And once again, thank you for all your great work and...
Thank you for your consideration and decision.
And if there are any volunteers out there too that have an avid interest in the history of Warrenville, they can contact this group and sign on. Okay, our next item is the consideration of the Warren Tavern Fiscal Year 25 Funding Assistant Request, and Senior Accountant Covina will introduce and tell us about this item.
Good evening, everyone. I'll introduce you to Monica Johnson, who will be, who's the chairperson for the Tourism and Arts Commission, and she will be presenting the recommendation of the Warren Tavern Fiscal Year 2025 Funding Assistance Request.
Seems like a timely night to be talking about this, the way it worked out. So good evening to all of you. The Fiscal Year 2025 Grant Application Review Cycle was the second one that TAC commissioners officially reviewed the Warren Tavern's funding request. The funding for this request is outside of the budget for the Hotel Tax Grant Program, so the application was considered separately according to the city's Warren Tavern Funding Assistance Procedure document. After completing a review of the application at TAC's February 15 meeting, TAC commissioners voted to recommend funding $3,750 of the $10,007 request. We would be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you and welcome. Are there questions and comments? I see none. Alderman Lockett? Oh, Alderman Davalos, go ahead.
So I see that the city removed the security system, which I totally understand. So I don't know if this question is for you or somebody else. Will that be part of, now that this building's part of the city, then we'll incorporate it into whatever we're doing at some point?
City Administrator?
It will be evaluated and when it becomes one of the city's buildings that we own. We are looking at security camera upgrades for other city buildings, and so this will be reviewed at that time.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council accept the Tourism and Arts Commission recommendations and award $3,750 in hotel tax funds for capital investments to the Warren Tavern building, per the Tourism and Arts Commission memo dated February 16, 2024, and direct staff to include this funding in the Fiscal Year 2025 budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is Consideration of Tourism and Arts Commission Aesthetic Enhancement Project Recommendation for Fiscal Year 24, and Senior Accountant Covina will also introduce this item.
It's your lucky day, Monica. Once again, Monica Johnson, Chairperson for the TAC Commission, and she'll be presenting the recommendation of the Tourism and Arts Commission Aesthetic Enhancement Project for Fiscal Year 2024.
I'll just start with a little background on the program for neighbors who are joining us tonight. Since 2025, the Tourism and Arts Commission, or TAC, has been honored to research and recommend the purchases of public artwork within the $60,000 budget that the city council has set aside every two years for aesthetic enhancement projects throughout our community. To date, this program has added three new pieces of public sculpture to the city's collection. An origami squirrel on her collection of acorns in Leon Schmidt Park, a police officer and child on the grounds of the Warrenville Police Department, and the most recent addition to Bob Walters Commons installed during this current budget year, the winged horse entitled Tribute created by Warrenville's own Jen Cressel. After the purchase and installation of Tribute for nearly, for a total of nearly $46,000, there is a little more than $14,000 remaining in the aesthetic enhancement budget. With a portion of that balance, TAC is hoping to add a burst of color to the city's art collection. For over a year, TAC Commissioners Linda Osborne and Brian Owens, who are here this evening, tireless workers, have been steadfastly working with two representatives from the Mexican Cultural Center du Page, Sarah Phelan and Fernando Ramirez. Their goal has been to arrange for an artwork purchased inspired by the blockbuster show at Cantini in 2022 entitled Alabrihe: Creatures of a Dream World, which featured colorfully painted fantastical creatures designed and created by many talented Mexican artists. Warrenville has been fortunate enough to have the chance to commission an alabrihe of our own from one of these artists, Edgar Camargo Reyes. Edgar uses a technique that we might know as papier-mache, using paper and paste to blend imagination, tradition, and emotion. When the Warrenville Historical Society received a Hotel Tax Grant to sponsor a workshop for Warrenville families to learn about and create their own alabrihe sculptures during the summer of the Cantini exhibit, it was Edgar whose talents were featured. Edgar's alabrihe cats, based on Ivan Albright's picture of Dorian Gray, is now part of the Historical Society's collection, thanks to the city's Hotel Tax Grants. The thing about papier-mache sculpture is that unlike the various metal sculptures that TAC has recommended so far, papier-mache cannot survive very long outside. TAC commissioners needed to find a large enough indoor space for this artwork that would allow Warrenville residents many years of enjoyment. TAC commissioners determined that installing the artwork at the Warrenville Public Library could provide the protection this piece would require, along with, along with the greatest potential for this piece to be widely viewed by many residents of all ages. Commissioners Osborne and Owens worked with the library's director, Jason Stolman, who worked with the library board. All necessary agreements are in place. The city would own the proposed artwork and the library would be its home. Having the library as the proposed home for this new piece of artwork, the design that has been commissioned features a colorful owl with a five-foot wingspan. We all know that reading great books makes us wiser, so it seems fitting that an owl might make its home, suspended from the ceiling beams of the Warrenville Public Library to inspire us all. That said, TAC is proposing the purchase of one brightly painted papier-mache owl created by artist Edgar Camargo Reyes for a sum of $5,000. TAC is also proposing that the intergovernmental agreement with the Warrenville Public Library for loan and display of the artwork be approved. Upon completion in mid-April, this piece would be installed by the library. I personally would like to thank the TAC commissioners, the city staff, the representatives from the Mexican Cultural Center du Page, and from the library, who were all involved in taking this exciting project to this point. It's quite a project. So many thanks. So as you consider this recommendation, are there any questions you might have?
Well, thank you. First of all, there are a lot of things that had to be completed to bring this to fruition, and it wasn't just ordering a piece of artwork to have on display. It was much more than that. So thank you to the entire Tourism and Arts Commission for following through on all the details and being so actively engaged in trying to bring this to Warrenville. I remember how excited people got about the artwork they saw at Cantini, Cantigny, Cantini last year, and thought, boy, this would be great to bring to Warrenville. And in less than a year, here it is. So thank you for that. And it is great to carry on the tradition Warrenville has of supporting the arts and its dedication to, to the arts. So we're assembling, with your, your efforts and your group's efforts, we're assembling quite a collection of wonderful art pieces that totally enrich our community. So thank you for that. And are there questions or comments from the commissioners? I think Mayor here, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
This is wonderful. What a great venue for this piece of art. We know that, that library is used 24/7, all year round, and a lot of kids go there. We have a lot of local artists represented there. The huge bird stained glass thing was a Warrenville artist, David Revels, many years ago, that did that for the community. So what a great place to put this. And being indoors, again, it'll be seen year-round. So this is very exciting. So great job. As he said, I know these things don't just happen because somebody says, hey, let's do this, and then it's done. Somebody says, hey, let's do this, and then somebody has to do a lot of work to get it all come together. So thank you so much for that. I'm excited to see it.
Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council, one, approve an agreement with the Mexican Cultural Center du Page for the purchase of one albrigene artwork for $5,000, including delivery and installation, subject to the city attorney review, and two, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Warrenville Public Library District for the loan and display of the artwork.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you for all your efforts, and thank you to the Tourism and Arts Commission and all the staff that helped make this possible. Our next item is Discussion of the Fiscal Year 2025 Draft Citywide Work Plan, and Assistant City Administrator Morgan will introduce this item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Included with your agenda backup material this evening is the draft citywide work plan for Fiscal Year 25. This will be the last committee of the whole meeting that this item is presented prior to the budget workshop on Saturday. And I would like to bring note that we did make some changes to this one, or changes. We moved the items CW 2-8 through 10 were originally listed above as Tier 1 items. If you recall, the last committee of the whole item, Public Works Director Kukler requested that that item be moved down to Tier 2. So we made that move. And then additionally, we added item CW 2-12, establishing a work group to discuss issues concerning use of golf carts that we forgot to include before, and we added that into the work plan.
I think...
That, I'm happy to answer any questions.
City Administrator has a comment?
I do. I just want to point out that we will be discussing at the upcoming Public Safety and Finance Committee, the last direction from the committee regarding a work group for the golf, the use of, they should say, non-highway vehicles actually, because it's not just specific to golf carts. But, so that item may be adjusted or moved depending on the direction that comes out of that committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Okay. I guess not much in the way of discussion and no action needs to be taken on this item, so thank you for the report. Our next item is to review and file the Economic Development Report, and this is provided to us by the Community and Economic Development Director, Amory. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding this report, Alderman Davalos.
Yes, thank you. I just have a comment. Thank you very much for, for outlining this whole process so that myself and I'm sure others can really understand how much we have to know and learn and understand about development that is so different than it was. And, and if we don't pay attention, and you outlined it beautifully what some of those elements are, if we don't pay attention to that, we will not be successful because that's what's going on, and it's not going, development isn't designed, the basic of it, what's necessary and what developers are looking for, it's not designed by us. We're responding to what the market is saying, and I think we've been doing that quite well for a while. But this report shows we're continuing to do that even deeper, and, and it's complicated. And every time I read one of these reports, I, I realize that, and I learn, oh, you know, I didn't really think about that. But if you, if you dig down, that's exactly, you know, what's going on. I mean, we're all learning and trying to get rid of our old views that aren't working anymore. So my point is, thank you. This is, I think it's important not only for us to have, maybe the public will read it or whatever, but it does help us understand why certain decisions are being made the way they are. So thank you.
I really appreciate those remarks. I feel like I've been doing economic development for 25-plus years in a few different states, and it's, it's a new world post-COVID. And every time I go to a conference or an event or meet with other groups that are responsible for economic development in the region, there's a realization that things are changing. And so it's, I like this report because it's a really great opportunity to, as you say, kind of explain what's happening here and how it's relating to the patterns and what we can do to position ourselves well going forward. So I'm really glad to know that you like it, and I will present another one in six months.
Mayor?
Yeah, the report's always well-received and very well-done. Thank you. And I just wanted to remind you that we promised you that we would keep you busy when you came here, and we're keeping the promise, right?
Absolutely, and I wouldn't want it any other way.
And Wednesday, we'll be going to Chuzdu Page together to learn some other information about what's going on in the county too. So it's really important, and you do a great job of this outreach of keeping us connected with all these possibilities. Again, given the number of changes that are forthcoming and ones that are somewhat predictable, some that are not predictable, you're keeping us right on the cutting edge of information so that we can make good, informed decisions. That's very much appreciated.
Again, thank you for the report, and we'll go on to the next item, which is an informational item. It's an update on the OTRS Number 2 project. And I don't know if anyone has any questions or, Director Amory, would you like to make comment on, on this, this report? I think it was fairly well described and outlined as far as what is taking place with OTRS in our backup materials.
Yes, our senior civil engineer, Christine Hawking, does a great job of staying on top of this project. We try to include these updates regularly to keep you aware, and it's going to be an exciting year. A lot of transformation's going to be happening out there. I know as a community, you've been waiting a long time to see that transformation, and we're excited to see it moving forward to that position. She had meeting, as you read in here, you know, the contracts are underway, she's had meetings with the contractors, and dirt's going to start moving before we know it. So it's an exciting time.
Great. Thank you for that. I don't see any questions or comments. We'll move on to the next item, which is also to review and file the bimonthly Code Enforcement Activity Report. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this report? Okay. If not, we'll move on to item number eight, our final item this evening, and we'll review and file the 2024 Community Development Work Program Update. And is there any comments or questions regarding this? Saying none? That brings us to the conclusion of tonight's agenda, and just like to, again, express my appreciation to the staff who always makes our job easy and keeps us well-informed on all the things that are happening in the city. So thank you. And Alderman Lockett?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Second?
A motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and thank you, everyone. Good evening.
This conference is no longer being recorded.